Welcome, everyone. We're going to call to order the meeting for Caldonia Community Schools Board of Education, May 16th. It all rise from the touchscreens.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to all of you. Tonight during the meeting, we do have time designated for public comment. At that time, before that starts, we do ask that everyone turns in a card with your contact information on there for follow-up as appropriate. Back in the back corner of the room, Dr. Troeger will be collecting cards, so please turn them in there. That is a time to direct any comments to the board. Not an individual board member, please don't address any personnel or individual student issues that would be inappropriate during a public meeting. We will continue with our consent agenda. We have April...oh, I'm sorry, can we roll call first? Asper, here, Clement.
Here.
Isitch.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Saydu.
Here.
White. Here. Brittany is on her way, by the way, she's stuck in traffic. She will be here shortly. Okay. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, April 18th, 2022 minutes, May 2022 personnel reports, and April 2022 payables.
And move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Just a second. Ms. Katie? Are there any questions, corrections on those? Let me please say roll call. Asper, yes?
Yes.
Clement?
Yes.
Isitch?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White. Yes. Motion carries. We will move to 5, report some information. Do we have our student representative again? Glad to see you.
Good to see you, too.
You can go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Emerson Geig, and I'm a junior at Caldonia High School, and I'm also a representative of Student Council. And I'm just going to talk to you guys about an event that we recently planned. We planned a new spring carnival, it was our first time ever doing it. The goal of it was to highlight other areas of the school, specifically art and music programs, which I think we did a great job in doing. And we made pieces, prints of the artwork done by students, and that was displayed all around the carnival. And we had live music from strike, backpipes, choir, and a student band that also played. We also had food trucks, prizes, dump tanks, a watermelon eating contest. In general, we feel this was a super big success, and we were happy to be able to plan something for the spring. We had a ton of participation, and we just need to have a conversation whether or not we're going to do this again next spring. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. As last time, you can do what you need to do. We'd love to have you stay, but if you have things you need to do for finals or just end of school, you can feel free to leave.
Okay.
Thank you. We will move on to 5B, which is bond finance update. Who exactly would like to take that first?
Yes. So I just wanted to follow up with the information that was shared at the March 31st Special Board Meeting. District Administration then informed Board members that due to rapid inflationary costs, as well as a few change or addition requests from township officials, the updated projections for the New Dutton had come in four million over budget. So business people have been hearing about rapid inflation, whether it's at the gas station or grocery store, it's been impacting us. After the discussion on the...or during the discussion on the 31st, the Board members had inquired about the potential of a sinking fund, as well as another bond if necessary, and to see if we could get some further information for the Board to discuss in the future. It was also kind of stated that we wanted to see what happens when we get some actual bid numbers in. We do not have actual bid numbers and probably will not get them until sometime mid to late June. Once we get that information, we'd be willing to share to see if we actually came in at the four million, a little under, a little over. But we wanted to share that information tonight. It was also requested during a recent Finance and Operations Committee that we bring back the list that was shared on the 31st of March, so that the Board can maybe have some discussions about things to consider in terms of either reducing in the scope of the bond or eliminating altogether if necessary if we find that the estimates come in significantly over budget and we need to make some choices. So with that, we put together a very brief presentation tonight, just to kind of quickly speak to some of that. And so Ms. DeVries, as well as Mr. Hess will maybe answer some questions along with me. But if we can go to the first slide, please. So basically, what we saw is, on the 31st, we shared that the new updated numbers is about a little bit over four million estimated when we submitted the bond package to the state back in 2020. And that's for the New Dutton. That four million is really looking at a...initially, we talked about a dual entry off Patterson and then a entry and exit off 76, primarily for busing to try to separate that out. Then as we got the first indication that prices were escalating, we were finalizing the community center, so we had to make some adjustments there. We made several adjustments to craft, and one of them is taking it from two entries and exits off Patterson to just one more enhanced exit and entry off Patterson. At that time, we talked about taking out the 76 entrance and adding that later if the money ended up being better than we anticipated. The reason why I've written all of that up is if you go to the original design with the two off Patterson and the one off 76, then our total is closer to six million over. With the one enhanced design off of Patterson and the entry off of 76, then you're just talking about the four million part. Was there anything that I missed on that? Okay. So Matt and Sarah gave me the okay, so I'm going to say let's go to the next slide. So right now, again, we don't have the current bid numbers. This process is still underway, so we're expecting to get that sometime in late June. But our actions was to go forward with the bid process and see what numbers actually come out, and that will give us a little bit more definitive targets of what reductions we might have to consider. We go to the next slide. Here's just kind of a quick breakdown of the things that Mr. Hess provided during the 31st meeting, but with numbers attached to them. So one was not add additional classrooms at Cal-L. And so just to quickly bring the Board back to the memory of the Board, we looked at, as time go by, so that we could have four strands in all of our buildings, we would need to add at least two classrooms at Cal-L, just given the size of it. That way, we would have the ability to have four Kinder, four First, four Second, Third, and Fourth, all the way up the line. So to add two additional classrooms there, you see the figure at 420. A connector between the North Campus and the South Campus complex that was put in with the cost of close to $600,000, as that was one of the things we heard from the community, just in terms of the students passing back and forth between the two buildings during inclement weather. A partial bus covering that would protect some of our buses, particularly in the tough Michigan winters, make it a little better for the Transportation Department that came in at 454, or at least that's within the bond budget. We talked about adding bleachers at the high school complex gym. This is the auxiliary gym that was listed at 268 for when we have competitions and things there, to give it a little bit more room for seating. Playground improvements for Cal-L, Emmens, Kettle, and Perris that was listed at 461. A lot of individual things identified with landscaping, additional door hardware, security, flooring, furniture, et cetera. We kind of lumped those all in at 2.7. And then there was...it was money put in the budget for expansion of the athletic weight room training facility for all athletes, and that was listed at 2.2 million. So if we were to add all of those up, you'll come up to the total of about 7.1 million. If we go to the next page, some of the things that Mr. Hess identified is where we could probably make some reductions and still keep to the essence of the bond that was passed by the community is maybe some reduction in the landscaping, including some of the security lighting, security barriers, sidewalks, replacement, and other pathway improvements at 230. Reducing some of the door improvements and including some of the security locks, door openers, enclosures, fire door updates, et cetera, 146. Reduced playground improvements, limiting improvements to the ground coverings and other cosmetic things, and no new equipment at Cal-L, Emmens, Kettle, or Perris, but still preserving the playground equipment, or at least what was in the budget for the New When you put all those things together, that was looking at about 2.2 million in reductions. So those are just some of the quick ideas that came up. We can go to the...oh, there it is. Thank you. The additional options that were presented is utilizing accumulated bond funds from unused contingency projects to be completed. So essentially, this is going through, and sometimes, because this is projected from probably the work was done in 2019, we're here in 2022. Things always change, and sometimes you find that after you do a project, you might have a little bit more in the budget than you anticipated, or in a particular area. But the challenge is, other times, you find that you were under budget, and so it kind of ebbs and flows. But that's essentially what we mean when we talk about the unused contingency. So this option would eliminate any safety net for projects with two years of bond projects to remain if we start going down this path. This option also removes the opportunity to add back projects in later years of the bond. So another area that we have tried to build up a little bit over time is our Public Improvement Fund. And one of the things we talked about is for the purchase of land for the New Dutton Elementary, we used some district funds, I believe, from the Public Improvement Fund. So the sale of property in the future was going to go back into the Public Improvement Fund. And what this is, is essentially a little extra cushion, because when I got here in 2018, one of the things that we didn't really have is a healthy line item budget for things that had been reduced pretty significantly as far back as 2008, and we kind of held that. So what we found is we had a lot of deferred maintenance items that were high dollar amounts, and the only way you could do that is with a bond, or what we chose to do is create Public Improvement Funds, so that if we had a boiler go out, we had an emergency situation where we needed another bus, or whatever it is, we did have some funds that could keep the district operations going without starting to cut into the operational money that we generally use for education, salary, and everything else. So that was another area that we wanted to bring up for discussion for the Board. And then if we can go to the next slide. And I'm going kind of fast, so I don't know if Mr. Hess or Ms. DeVries had anything to add. So additional options posted by the Board during the Special Board Meeting. One...or questions. Could we go to the voters for another bond? What is our current bonding capacity? So at the time, this Board made a conscious decision not to max out the district's bonding capability. We had the ability to go for about $120 million with a zero mil increase, and we chose to go for an 88.1. The other question that was asked at the meeting on the 31st is, could we go to the voters for a sinking fund, and what would that generate? So thanks to Ms. DeVries, she worked with a couple firms, as well as the state, to really identify what our options were. So one is, if we were to go after another bond, this would require another approval of the voters in our community. It requires the state of Michigan to get the approval through the Department of Treasury. This would not be an increase to any of the debt mills. Currently, we are seven mills, and so this would not add any more millage debt for us, or this would not increase the debt mills that we have to pay, but it would allow us to capture up to $46 million of additional bonding capacity if we were to choose that. Sarah, is there anything that I forgot on this one? Additionally, what if the district...the other question was, what if the district looked at the sinking fund? If we go for a sinking fund, this also would require a vote, approval from our community voters. It would be a millage increase to the voters. It would also provide annual funding for capital projects in the tune of five to 10 million. So when you're thinking of capital projects, this would essentially replace our Public Improvement Fund, or maybe the need for a Public Improvement Fund, within five or 10-year increments. But it would give one mil, and you can go higher than one mil, you can go half a mil, it would be up to us. But just to understand the impact of that, a one mil increase would provide the district about 1.8 million annually for either a five or a 10-year duration. You couldn't spend that just on anything, it's really for operational expenses. So again, kind of buses, technology has now been added to that. Certain things that may not last a 30-year lifecycle would need to be captured or taken care of in the course of the district operations. New AC units, heating units, still things like that. So it could really help the maintenance and operations, budgeting, lawn mowers, all of those different type of things.
Just a note that you cannot purchase school buses with a sinking.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Correct that. No school buses with that. Wishful thinking on my part. So budget shortfall, the next steps. Bid packages, estimates to go out early to mid-June. After the bids are returned, the Bond Team will review and clarify questions and compile the results. Bid results will then be shared with the Board, and the Board can discuss and determine things as desired. The reason why we're bringing it up tonight, it was requested to just maybe have the conversation a little bit earlier, prior to the bid, so that maybe the Board will want to determine what you see are the priority, or the areas that we need to either eliminate or reduce if we find ourselves in a financial challenge with the building of the New Dutton, or if you want to consider that maybe the direction is to move forward with either a sinking fund or a new bond to complete the rest of the projects. So that was a lot before I turned it over to the Board, maybe for a discussion. Are there any questions that we can answer? Yes, sir.
So one of the things that you had in scope reductions or elimination was about door hardware and security. Can we talk a little bit about that as a security concern, potentially?
Yes, I'm going to have Mr. Hess address that.
The line in the bond application is simply door hardware, doors and door hardware. Broad spectrum, it includes everything from replacing physical doors that have gone past in life, and we have a number of those that are in need of being updated, to the closers on the doors, the crash bars on the doors. Currently, the doors between the North and South High School Complex, as an example, currently the opener that the students push, the wheelchair access to open the door, is not functioning because it's been damaged beyond repair. And we're looking at sourcing different options for changing that to an automatic opener so that we reduce the cost. It's items like that that are in this area of the bond. Would also cover a lot of the new card access systems that we have, we would want to add to existing doorways and existing parts of the buildings for security entry, for secure entry.
So not sort of additional security measures to keep students, and why not, safe?
Yeah, this is...this includes that as well, but only as it relates to doors and frames and access points, not anything with cameras or, you know, other systems.
And with that being lumped into sort of a larger, sort of smorgasbord of items, is that something that could be pulled out to say, hey, we still want to do a lot of these things around security?
Yeah, everything here is a very open menu. You know, we can expand upon any particular part, it's a challenge in the format given. But like I say, those...the headings that are on that bond application to the Treasury Department are unfortunately a little vague. So door hardware covers a great deal of stuff.
Just...we talked about the accumulated contingency, do we have an idea of how much that is?
I don't, I don't know.
I look at Sarah. Right now, we don't. This is...we just did the paving project. We came in several hundred thousand dollars under budget. That's stuff that goes into that. When contingencies don't get spent, they go back to that accumulated savings. However, at the same time, as we already see projects going in, some of those contingencies are already moving into other areas. So it's a very fluid thing, and I wish we had a better estimate on it right now, but it is a very fluid, which has probably changed in the last three months as we've been getting into some of the projects now, so.
Sort of my last one for a minute. One of the things I had asked for, I think, in the March meeting was if there was any sort of a priority that could be sort of assigned, because I honestly don't know what we're talking about, like playground improvements or landscaping improvements, like do we have some stuff that's in disrepair that's causing, you know, either safety concerns or other concerns that we want to address versus, eh, it's just some aging equipment that we want to make sure. But those are the things that I don't know if we're talking about that. I know we talked a little bit about furniture after the meeting, and, you know, those are the kind of things. So I didn't know if we had maybe a priority order of, hey, these are the things that are kind of high priority because...
As a district, we don't have that at this point. Things that we listed in the bond, just thinking 2019 and five, six years out, some things we put in there as a priority, like it's probably time to update some of these doors or locking mechanisms, or add swipe cards in other areas. But to say today, no, we haven't figured out what that looks like. Same thing with maybe some of the playground equipment. Like we know, some of...a lot of our playground equipment is fine, but when you look at how many years it's been there, it's probably time to refresh and update. So some of that is projected out, and, you know, sometimes you might think that something will last for 20 years, and that actually lasts you 25 to 30, other times 20 years might hit you, you know, 13 years, and then you got to five. So we'd still have to do a lot of work to really whittle down those numbers and go back through it, but we don't have that now unless Matt or Sarah know something that I don't know.
And it varies by building. You know, one building, a couple buildings we have have some older furniture, they need to replace, others don't. So it's really, we haven't had those conversations with the principals yet, because we're not at that point in the bond. So it's a...we kept it as an umbrella piece.
And I hear your point, Jason. I think the House of Lords suggests you'll need to...so when do we expect the bid tax to be presented in the absence of street unit? And the number of 4.69 million is on P31. Do you have any sense of what we might be looking at at the end of this month?
We haven't changed the $4.6 million line, because that's where we were holding. All the estimates are still on that line. That includes, like Dr. Martin said, the two driveways. So there's been no update to that by any of the folks involved in doing that, they've been focusing on getting the back of the bid. We expect to see the bid bids returned late June, by the end of June. And that will get some time to, after that, to get them figured out, because you're going to have about 60, 70 bid categories to work through, to figure out where we are and get a truer number. So we'll be reporting that probably to the Bond Committee at a bond meeting, you know, in that timeframe, in June, early July, and then we'll work to get it to the whole Board, you know, through the memo and communication from that committee.
Thank you. I think as a broad overview, this is what we asked for, which was just kind of trying to understand, like category, where those numbers were. Obviously, you know, hoping that we get to June and we're not faced with all of that, but certainly, obviously, we would be looking for that deeper dive into the breakdown of that, where we can, you know, kind of hone in and pick and choose and get through that. So we will look forward to more information coming back on that and hope for the best in the meantime. Are there any other questions?
Yep.
Dr. Martin, do you...I agree with whatever I'm saying. We need some of the priorities of the district and decide what makes sense. But are you...obviously, this isn't unique to us. Everybody's dealing with this a lot around the same time. Are you hearing, besides all the things that we've already done for cost indicators, is there anything else that people are doing outside of what we're looking at?
Not that I'm aware of, but I will say, I've been hearing other districts who are running into a similar situation. So like if you're going up for a bond now, just build in what the cost hike is, and you look great. But for those who are mid-bond, like we are, seeing huge escalations, I haven't heard much in terms of what they're doing as far as the solution to it. I haven't, but...
Actually, at a MSBO meeting of Facility Directors this past Friday, every one of these options was discussed by other schools. I didn't have to have taken it. There are a number of schools that are clearly just simply eliminating projects that were in their scope. They're just taking it off the board completely. A number have done significant scope changes, scope reductions. So it's right down the walk, some are going to their accumulated savings, others are kind of looking at that and, you know, like saw a lot of wide eyes at that one. But yeah, so it's all of the above, and it's all what we're...what we presented here that we should reinforce at that meeting. So the answer to the question is yes, all of the above. All right, thank you.
How many districts have a sinking fund, or, yeah, currently? Do we know, like within...do they?
I don't know what that number is offhand, but it's a pretty common thing that districts do, particularly probably since the 2008 financial hit, when a lot of districts did is went to a sinking fund, so that they didn't have to make reductions, reprogramming and stacking, but you could keep your maintenance and operations intact. We didn't. We chose to like really take some deep hits in that area, which maybe put some delayed work ahead of the district. So it's pretty common across the state, in all three areas that I've been in, that's a fairly common thing, but how many districts, I have no idea.
You can...Tim?
I think we get a lot of homework to address at this point. I didn't just talk about the...our reserve funds. And I don't know what the public has decided about a bond, you know, after a bond. And I don't know what the public has decided about a bond, you know, after a bond. It's the right reasons, but we'll have to see what we end up. It's very odd to start where we started and being around and see the prices go up like this. So, it's unfortunate, but we'll have to deal with it.
I mean, there's sort of on that, would there be any way to sort of hold the community on various support for a bond that would be zero tax increase? I mean, I don't know that we would find support for adding taxes, especially in the current economy, but keeping it the same, just to see if there would be as an option. I don't know.
So, we can certainly hold the community. I think we can do it just a simple hold. I think if you do a simplistic hold, probably the risk is, there's a lot of explanation for why you're even asking the question. We can, there are some firms that sometime have some more scientific ways of getting towards that information. So, when we constructed the bond, we worked with a group to not only do some survey information, but they did some focus groups and tried to see, based on the things that we talked about, what seemed to resonate with different segments of our community, which is how we constructed the bond. So, we could certainly do what you are suggesting. It's just a matter of, maybe we would choose to do it in the timeframe. One, we certainly be a lot more precise and specific, but it's gonna take a lot more time. The other one, you can whip up in a week or two, but it, in a lot of cases, won't give you very solid information.
Okay, Mark? All right. Lots of things to consider, and we will look forward to more information. We are going to move on to, thank you to all of you too for the work put into that. We're gonna move on to our discussion items. We have 6A, reproductive health, with Ms. Prakowski and Dr. Trober.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So, this conversation has evolved over the course of about 10 months or so. And so, what I mean by that is about 14 months ago, we began the process of putting together a team to review our reproductive health curriculum. That was slightly out of compliance because we are called to do that every two years. We haven't done that in this district for quite some time. So, it took some backend work, but nonetheless, we put our team together based on district recommendations, met just about monthly, in the course of six weeks approximately, the team and I did. And the team is comprised of administrators, teachers, and community members. So, we reviewed current practices, the responsibility of the team based on state guidelines. I also reached out to the ISD to find out what curriculum resources were popular or among the best. We received four of those. Two of them, alone and whole, we were using in our district. And I'll get to those in just a minute. So, the team and I put together a list of what criteria we wanted to see based on input, not only from the district, but then from those that were voicing thoughts and opinions from the community as well. We reviewed each of those four curriculums and, in the end, decided to move forward with the two resources we currently have in practice at the middle grades as well as the high school. So, we went through a pretty extensive process, listened to a lot of input, and in the end, decided to move forward with our recommendation to you would be at the high school level, 912, to go with Michigan Model, and grades five through eight, to go with willing to wait. So, that's a very truncated part of the process over a 10-month period of time, but extensive, and I think we did pretty well with the homework we were tasked with. So, thoughts, questions, comments, or concerns?
Jason?
And then, just to clarify, this is now sort of like a 30-day window for people to be able to review the curriculum before we vote on it next month?
Yes. Yep, so after tonight, the official process will be that we recommend, make the recommendation. There is a 30-day window for the community or whomever to come and review the curriculum, offer feedback, and then after that 30-day window, at the next board meeting, you would either approve it or not.
Have you said this was done through community forums? Or that was presented also, true, at Duncan Lake? Was that held?
Yeah, so there are, again, state guidelines that we have to follow. And part of them is that it hosts two community meetings. And we did that in January and February, if I'm not mistaken.
Did you have any questions?
I just wanna say, Josh, this is truly, it doesn't take, like, weeks. It takes months, and it takes a tremendous amount of time. And I want to thank you for your dedication, your team, and our efforts working on this. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We will, and for anybody that wants to know, the materials will be present here at the admin office, correct?
Yes, present in the admin office, and I believe in this room, actually.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you very much. If you do have any questions, make sure to just get those through Dr. Martin to Dr. Trober and Prakowski. And you're gonna move on to 6C, which is 2223 school bus purchase, with Mr. Hess and Mr. Bries.
Well, we can't do with the sinking fund. This is the first presentation we'll be voting on, this hopefully next month. As part of the general fund, school bus replacement cycle, we are recommending, the Transportation Department has filed for a recommendation for purchasing originally four, but we're looking at a budget constraint. They've gone up in price quite a bit, so we're recommending three school buses, purchasing next school year. This is one new 29-passenger bus and two full-size 77-school buses for the fleet. This will continue to bring our fleet up to date, keep it safe, efficient, and reliable for our students that we're transporting every day. Pricing for this is made available through the Michigan School Business officials. They have a school bus purchase program where they have a full, as you see in the printout that we're attached to it, where every option is examined, alternatives are examined. We are not buying the cheapest school buses on the market. We're very real about that. However, our fleet is all identical. They are all Thomas-built buses. What we see in a cost increase per bus, we will see in a cost savings by not having to retool, re-part, and retrain our mechanics. We have a lot of computerized equipment on these buses now. We would have to replace the diagnostic tools for as well. So, we are recommending that, and again, that's something for next year's budget. Also, a note, we are being notified that even if they are purchased, ordered in July, we will probably not see them to at least September of 2023, meaning the following budget year. So, we're ordering buses next year for the following year. So, we're gonna try in the coming years to bring this a little sooner because I don't think this problem is gonna change.
So, are outgoing buses?
Our outgoing buses, two things we do with them. We would put them at auction and end up for sale in different manners over the course of years, depending on what can garner us the best sale price. For a lot of years, they were going to scrap yards. Basically, they were just buying the engines. And they would rebuild the engines and transmissions, cut the rest of it up for scrap metal. Currently, the hottest market is South America. Buses are being bought for, several times, what we were selling them as scrap. So, this is a good thing. So, the value of the buses, used buses, has gone up, and they're being driven directly off our lots and south on 131, heading for the Texas border into South America. So, and that's from all over the country.
Jason?
Just real quick, the age of the buses that we're getting rid of, and then what does that do just for the overall age of the fleet?
We're looking at getting rid of 15-year-old buses that are currently in our self-fleet. This brings, should bring our average, I didn't get the right number, I didn't get it back in time to submit. I will make sure I have it correctly, but I believe it brings our regular daily running fleet average down to 12-years-old. But I will definitely update that for the junior board. July, next month.
Any other questions, sorry?
Tim?
All right, Jason.
Just one more. So, if we authorize a purchase next month and it's not gonna be delivered, are we paying for them 15 months in advance? Or how does this gonna work with the finances?
No, Sarah would never write a check for them.
I figured so.
No, it just goes into a holding place in the budget and moves forward through the following year. It's a committed figure.
Kelly?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, you mentioned salvage value. What could we expect for a 15-year-old bus?
At this, to be very honest, volatile market, I don't know. We heard reports from a recent auction where some 10-to-15-year-old buses were selling for upwards of $12,000 and $13,000 each. We have normally, from scrapyards, gotten $4,000 to $5,000. So, that's pretty significant. That's good.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. You're gonna move to 6B, which is KISD budget, 2223.
Yeah, so each year, all of the local county districts are to approve or disapprove of the resolution, the Kent ISD and each ISD in the state, their budget for next year. So, looking at Kent ISD's 2223 budget, that was included in your packet. Their general fund represents about $58 million, which is 14.6% of all of their budgets. Their total budgets of all the different funds total $399 million. So, you're just voting on the general fund tonight. And in that general fund, they are looking to end the year for 2223 with a $1.1 million surplus. And that would put their projected fund balance at $7.5 million, which is 13% of their annual expenditures. This was reviewed during our finance committee, and questions were answered, and so we are in support of recommending approval for this budget.
What was the fund balance? Seven?
7.5, just about 7.6.
For the committee or for Mr. Bries on that? Thank you very much. You're gonna now move to 6D, which is property sale resolution. Dr. Martin and Ms. Bries?
Yes, I'll take the first crack at this. Over the past 12 months plus, we have been looking at, or taken a comprehensive the property that the district currently owns, whether it is not any type of regular use by the district. We decided to take three of those properties and put them on the market to sell as they don't seem to fit in any of the district's current plans or future plans based on the growth patterns in our district and where these properties are located in proximity to other schools that we have. So, right now, we have kind of a split parcel. Egan Street, one, so there's actually two addresses you'll see in the resolution. One is, together, they make about 20.4 acres, but one is just a thin strip of land that really gives the larger portion an easement to utility rights. So, the district is selling those as a package deal. This property on Egan, 6399 Egan, was put together as one parcel, or one sale, if you will. And we put the information out, and we got multiple bidders. And so, the highest bidder came from Stillwater Capital in the tune of $325,000 for basically this 20-acre parcel. So, it is our recommendation to the board to accept the Stillwater Capital bid, to then authorize me to move forward with the sale of this property. I don't know if Mr. Hess or Mr. Bries had anything to add.
Just to clarify, the 6448 Egan is 20, is 19,000 acres. 6399 is just under acre, and again, is a utility easement across the street and out of the foremost insurance property.
Questions?
My understanding, we only hit three bids.
At this time, I'm just gonna stop for a minute. I've seen several people come in. I just wanna make sure. As we come up to public comment section, we do ask that you have one of these cards filled out, and please turn it in in that corner of the room to Dr. Trober, and he will get those. We ask that those be turned in before the public comment section starts. You do have three minutes at that time to address the board. Again, no personnel issues at that time, and make sure it's an entire board comment. At this time, we're gonna move to 7A, which is our Curriculum and Learning Committee report.
The Curriculum and Learning Committee met on May 10th, 2022, at 7:30 a.m. There was no public comment. Ms. Prakowski shared the award submission for Dr. Martin for the National School Public Relations Association, Bob Grossman, Leadership in School Communications Award. They should acronym that. Submitted on April 15th. We should hear back on the award winner before July. An overview of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, ESSER, proposed allocations was provided by Ms. Prakowski. Public meetings for staff and community members will be occurring during the month of May. I think one was already today, to seek additional feedback on the plan to begin implementation starting in summer of 2022 and continuing through June of 2024. Dr. Trober shared the Reproductive Health Committee's curriculum recommendation coming to the school board for approval in the June meeting. Presentation of the recommendation will be discussed here, which happened already, with the understanding that this curriculum will be available for the public view for 30 days prior to the board vote in June. Additionally, he shared the status of the curriculum review process for high school English and social studies, which is in progress. Recommendations for these respective curriculum reviews are planned for presentation at the June board meeting with a July board vote, and then, you know, 30-day public review period. There was an update on the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, MYKIP, for the 2021-22 school year, provided by Dr. Trober. Additional information on the new school improvement process is anticipated from the Michigan Department of Education during the 2022-23 school year. The U.S. News and World Report Best High Schools 2022 was shared by Ms. Prakowski. She provided both an overview of the factors for the selection, performance on state assessments, and how well they prepare students for college, and a comparison with similar districts to Caledonian High School. As part of our continuous improvement efforts, next steps were provided that include programs, processes, or systems in progress or plans to be implemented in the upcoming year. Dr. Martin, Ms. DeRiz, and Mr. Kingsbury shared updates from the Finance and Operations Committee, which met on May 12th. Dr. Martin provided an update on end-of-the-year activities and positive news for buildings around the district. The meeting adjourned at 8:50 a.m. The next Curriculum and Learning Committee meeting will be held on June 14th, 2022, at 7:30 a.m.
Are there any questions for that committee? Thank you very much. I'll look for your time there. And to 7B, which is Finance and Operations Committee?
Thank you. Finance and Operations Committee convened on May 12 at 7:30 a.m. Ms. DeRiz presented the KISD 2223 budget resolution, which requires a vote at the May board meeting. Additionally, Ms. DeRiz shared the district's third-quarter investment report and third-quarter budget actuality report. She concluded with the bond finance update. The committee discussed the serious escalation of prices and how it is impacting our building projects. Mr. Kingsbury shared negotiations and staffing updates. Committee discussed the use of protecting wands to be used in situations where there is reasonable suspicion that a student's carrying a weapon or other kind of... is reasonable suspicion that a student's carrying a weapon or other kind of thing. Another topic discussion involved moving toward the electronic purchasing of athletic tickets next year. Several districts around us have already moved in this direction and MHSAA only allows electronic purchases of tickets for postseason flight, the communication and the transition plan in place. Mr. Hess shared the 22, 23 plus purchase recommendation to acquire two new 77-passenger buses for one new 29-passenger bus. Ms. Prokowski provided an update and overview of the curriculum. Dr. Martin provided a superintendent. Meeting concluded with recommendations to committee for a two-year contract extension for the superintendent. Meeting adjourned at 8:57 a.m. Next meeting is on 7:30 a.m. Thursday, June 16. Throw me out, J60.
16.
And 7:30.
That 16 only means that Jason's actually right about the states. Are there any questions for that committee? I know your meetings have been really long, so thank you for digging in and the council discussions that are going on. Making this all up to date, so we appreciate that. No questions? All right. We're going to move on at this time to board reports. Obviously, this is exciting time of the year that we all look forward to, graduation rolling around. Vote spring cleanup is done in over with, so we will look to tackle that in the summer months and hopefully it'll be a little less wet than it was for the spring. Ready for superintendent report? Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
So just real quick, it's been a really, really, really busy month, I think, for our arts department. So having a couple of kids in school, got a chance to see the middle school play of Matilda Junior Middle School Orchestra Concert, high school middle school choir concerts, and just phenomenal amount of activity in just the last month, including the middle school orchestra concert, which was songs inspired by Mr. Sauerwee. So it was a collection of some of his favorite songs and it was really good, including a combined performance with the middle school orchestra and middle school choir on the singing of Caledonia, which was phenomenal. So just really shout out to the art department and teachers and staff and everyone who puts all that stuff on, because there was a lot for me just to go and attend. I can't even imagine how much just to work on it, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. It was an incredible performance, for sure. Anything additional? All right, thank you. Superintendent report.
Yes, so a couple of good things to report. Certainly persistence, we want to say kudos out to the students there and Ms. Renee Tepowski, one of our parents in the community. They have been working diligently over the last several years repeatedly to go after what we call the RE grant. This is a grant to have to be provided in additional supports for some of our students in the area of children who need it in our community. So thank you to them. They probably submitted this four, five times over, it felt like it, over the course of the years. So it was pretty challenging. In a lot of cases, it goes to districts that tend to have more of an economic need in the district like ours, but doesn't mean that we didn't have the need. And so kudos to them for stepping up and doing everything they can to help us move one step further in this process. High school graduation, your graduation information should have been sent with you in the last board update. Also, tonight, make sure that you get your graduation ballot if you don't already have that, so please see Ms. Stowe to have it before you leave tonight, so we can make sure that you got that in the meantime. Just a heads up, you wanted to be there by 6:15, maybe a little earlier. The ceremony this year is at Calvin University, so that was one of the changes that had been requested several years ago, but unfortunately due to the issues created by the pandemic, we've been pushed off its location for a couple of years. So get to move forward and hopefully we can accommodate everyone who wants to be there to support their graduate and not have to have them watch it on post-graduate TV and the different ones. So we look forward to that. The high school administration worked with the Landis Agency Farm Bureau to do a live tour, which I heard was pretty well received by the students. This is a state-of-the-art driving simulator that helps kids understand that just even for a moment of texting while driving or looking at their phone or impaired driving of any kind can be a pretty dangerous thing for kids. So it was a fun way to maybe give the real dangers of distracted driving and how they practice those lifelong habits of safe driving. That was a pretty fun event for the kids. Also, we want to congratulate a couple of our art winners. We had Erica Posma, as well as Anastasia Lenkuk, and I'm sure I flatter that name. Those two students received the Congressional Art, or got into a competition for Congressional Art. And U.S. Representative Peter Myers recently announced the winners, and those two were identified from Caledonia High School. So we're very proud of those two. One of their artwork was displayed, I believe, at the Gerald R. Ford Museum. The other one, I believe their artwork was in Washington, D.C. Congratulations to those students. Also, another shout out to one of our counselors, Ms. Barry Kane. She was recently announced as counselor of the year or the region. So probably about two weeks ago now, I was amongst several staff members who was able to praise her as she received this nomination. And she recently had an interview with WGBU, which is Grand Valley's radio station, about this prestigious award. So kudos to Ms. Kane and all of our staff, but it's nice to see when they are recognized that way.
Another one of the things that I wanted to address, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Hess, and so if you don't mind, I'm going to give him a moment of my time to give the last great superintendent report.
I asked to take this from Dr. Martin because it is so near and dear to my heart. Hopefully those programs have made it across the room. This past Saturday, we hosted the 57th Annual, 57 years Region 8 School Bus Driving Championship here at Caledonia Schools. This is the Region 8, which is Kent, Ottawa, Alleghanon, and Caledonia Counties. We have drivers from all of those counties here competing. This is a written test. This is a very, very detailed and very difficult, frankly, the skills test, both in inspection and in driving. And it takes it takes a good part of the day, but it was a beautiful day for it. I am deeply proud to say that I have participated in quite a few of these competitions and quite a few, we call the rodeos, yes, and none of them have been as professionally set up and run as the one here in Caledonia. So I really applaud our leadership team over there in transportation for doing just an incredible job bringing this together. I would also like to point out that of the top 10 finishing drivers, seven of them are from Caledonia, were from Caledonia Schools. We retained both of the trophies, and I say retained because, yes, we took them in the last competition, which was a few years ago. So we retained both of the trophies for the best of the best and for the team participation. Caledonia having four drivers in the top five, four drivers will be heading to the June 18th state championships at Anchor Bay in New Baltimore. So if anybody's interested and has a few hours to drive over to New Baltimore, I would love to see people there. I would like to just point out they are Al Oreya Orochko, Betty Nelson, Dawn Camp Jones, and Michelle Kowalski. Those placed second, third, fourth, and fifth, and they're going to states. We have a lot of local vendors, as you can see from the program, our premier vendors and our second tier, and there's more than this, can't get them all on the program. We are super grateful for their support and the support of the community. It is an amazing event, and I encourage you to stop by next year just to just to watch for at least a little bit to see what these what these drivers can do and how amazing it is. And again, I applaud, we have some fantastic drivers here at Caledonia Community Schools. And they are, they are all terrific. These are absolutely the best of the best.
It is fun to watch. I asked to have a crack at it and I was told no. And I don't think it was representative of my driving skills, but I thought it would be fun.
Yeah, it would be too, and I also said no. It's okay.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That'll be it.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to our public comment portion. I again ask that all cards are turned in at this time. Typically, we do have our CEA update at this time, and this is Amy Castle. Due to commitments for senior night, we'll be emailing everybody. Senior activity tonight, so she will be emailing everybody those updates, so please look for those to come. And go to move on to Carla Fressato, is it Fressato?
Fressato.
Fressato, thank you.
Hi, my name is Carla Fressato. I retired three years ago after a 40-year career in information technology. Prior to IT, I have a degree in elementary education from Michigan State University, and I taught second grade for two years back in the 1970s. That was a long time ago. I've lived in Caledonia for 22 years, and my son Steven graduated from Caledonia High School in 2005. He's received an outstanding education here and he's gone on to, he's just really flying, I'll tell you. I've listened to several of the parents who spoke at public comments portion in the last few school board meetings, and I just want to express that not everybody in the community agrees with some of the things that this group is saying. They are a more vocal group, they've come together as a group, and it doesn't mean that they represent all the people in the Caledonia community. They're claiming that critical race theory is being taught and social emotional learning should not be taught. They're claiming that a majority of Caledonia parents don't want that stuff taught and they're unhappy with the education their kids are receiving and that the standards are being lowered. And one person said that the Caledonia School Board is ineffective and insisted that CRT is being taught, even though the school board here says it's not being taught, and so claiming that they're not being transparent. There wasn't, I didn't hear any specific examples that they gave of CRT being taught. Is there hard data showing that the majority of parents in this community are unhappy with the Caledonia schools? Was there a poll taken of the Caledonia parents and statistics cited to back up this claim? I did a little research on the state of Michigan website curriculum, and it's clear from the Michigan, state of Michigan, CRT is not taught in any elementary, middle, or high school in the state of Michigan. There are some people that are incorrectly labeling any discussion of race or racism as CRT. The definition of CRT is CRT is a method of examination taught in law school and at the college level, and it helps analyze whether systemic racism exists and in particular whether it has an effect on law and public policy. So it is a higher-level, college-level theoretical class. As far as social emotional learning, I looked into that. It says that the goal is for children to be able to develop healthy identities, understand and manage emotions, have responsible and caring relationships, show empathy for others, and make responsible decisions. That all sounds like good stuff to me. I don't, I don't see anything bad there. But anyways, I just wanted to voice that not everybody in the community feels the way some of these comments that are being made. I don't, maybe a poll should be taken to see, you know, exactly what the numbers are. But I'm here to support the teachers and the administrators of the Caledonia School to let you know, there are many families in this community who believe that you guys are doing a tremendous job, our teachers are doing a tremendous job, and we need to attract more teachers. We don't need to be scaring them away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Carol P.
The coming of the lawless one is in according to the working of Satan, with all power and signs and lying wonders, and with all unrighteous deception among those who perish because they did not receive the love of the truth, that they may be saved. And for this reason, God will send them strong delusion, that they should believe the lie, that they all may be condemned, who did not believe the truth but had pleasure in unrighteousness. First Thessalonians 5:2. For you yourselves know perfectly that the day of the Lord so comes as a thief in the night; for when they say peace and safety, then sudden destruction comes upon them, as labor pains upon a pregnant woman, and they shall not escape. These two verses describe exactly what would happen to anyone who isn't following God's word, but is choosing to do the opposite of what God wants. A couple of examples. God created man in his own image. He created them male and female. Of course, I don't know exactly what each board member here believes, but I can tell you that if you agree with or are pushing children into questioning their genders, you are going against God. And the verses I just read apply to you. Romans 10:12. For there is no distinction between Jew and Greek, for the same Lord is Lord of all, bestowing his riches on all who call on him. Again, I don't know your hearts, but if you are encouraging children to believe that one race is better or worse than another, you are going against God. And the verses I quoted in the beginning apply to you. I am asking that each of you check your conscience. With everything that is happening in the United States and around the world, the Bible is speaking louder than ever. The Book of Revelation is right around the corner. There's war in the Middle East, our border is completely broken, a one-world government is being pushed all over the world, apostasy is in the church, there's food shortages and famine, and the United States no longer is a superpower. If you've never opened your Bible, now is the time. Matthew 24 explains what is beginning to happen right now, and Revelation explains what will happen to people who choose not to follow God. With the remainder of my time, I'd like to end in a prayer, if anyone would like to join me. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would open the eyes of everyone here to see the truth of what's happening around them, the hatred being pushed, the division amongst the children and families, the confusion being pushed on the children about their genders. Give everyone here wisdom and discernment to do the right thing, to follow you, Lord, to protect these children from evil, to speak up when their conscience tells them something is not right. We thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayer tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
We'll get you some micro assistance there. I apologize, I fell off my program here a little bit, so I'm going to give you the next couple names so you know who comes next. Next, we have Angela Regus, followed by Betsy. And after Betsy will be Kim.
I just want to second Jason's comments too about the choir program and the music program here at Caledonia. I sat through my seniors choir concert, and I thought I was prepared, and I didn't realize I was going to have a whole waterworks going on at the end of the program, but as always, always well done in Caledonia. So like I mentioned, my son Peyton, he's graduating this year, and I'm really proud of him, and we actually moved to Caledonia when he started first grade, I think. We moved here from the school, for the schools. I've always been a pro-Caledonia parent, pro-teacher, and I've been a room mom for several years for my children. I've enjoyed every single one of it. However, I am anti-indoctrination. I am anti against CRT and the racism that follows the CRT. I seek my advice and my mentoring from my friend, State School Board of Ed, Tom McMillan, who actually supports my campaign for House, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here as a parent. I've also sponsored Kalapalooza, so that just is another example of how I've been a supporter of our community. And as an advocate for parental rights, I testified before Senate, House, and the commissioners regarding the use of COVID mandates, and I feel that the decrease in enrollment in Caledonia has been due largely to the dissatisfaction from several parents, a big majority of parents in this district. in this district, and the numbers cannot lie. I'm not here to give you my opinion, I'm here to give you what I actually know, that the blatant radical leftist agenda is being taught in our school and the district, which we are now starting to see decreased enrollment. So let's get politics out of school. That's all we want as parents. I'm a Republican, and I make no apologies for that. However, I don't want to come up as, and trying to promote those agendas as well in the school. I would like to see a classical education without the politics, and I think that's how you better serve our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Betsy, followed by Kim, and then I think it's Mark.
Hi. As my time wraps up here, I just want to make sure you all know, I had pretty much overall nothing but a really amazing experience at Caledonia. Teachers have been fantastic. I believe I'm actually, I like coming to the board meetings, but there has been some things that have been really concerning to me, and I spoke about those a lot. What I do want to talk about is a situation that has happened, and I believe all of you guys are parents up here. I just want to know, how would you feel if your son or daughter came home and said that they were going to be raped or F'd? I experienced that. I addressed that with the school. I had to file a police report. Now, I do know that if I were to lie on my police report, that is illegal, and that's up to four years in jail for me. So when a reporter calls someone in the administrative office and says I'm lying, it's really, really insulting. My other thing is, if your son or daughter came home and told you that, and then had a student ask them about their genital area and the size of it, I think you would be pretty mortified, like I was. I have talked to some of the staff, and I thought they were handling it correctly, but I know that there's no punishment because I have staff at next school come to me and talk to me about it. What safety does my son have? Is it because he's a 6'2" 12-year-old that he can just handle himself? Because my son comes home and tells me, "Mom and Dad, I want to beat this kid up." You have to say to him, "No, you can't do that. You don't touch them. You walk away, you ignore them." It's pretty disgusting, every day. "Mom, I'm going to be done with this school soon. Can I just beat them up at the end of the year because they don't leave me alone?" Nope, you don't touch them. That could be a hate crime. Not normal kids defending themselves from being picked on. It's every day, and now other kids are getting picked on, and goes, "Mom, can you call school because they're picking on my friends? They're doing the same thing. Mom, can you advocate for my friends?" I didn't say advocate, but "Can you defend my friends?" Nope, that's their parents' job. I can't do it. They're not saying anything to you anymore. Then you can't say it. Well, they still kind of say stuff to me. Well, then you need to go to the principal. But why is this child, when I read the sexual harassment policy, allowed to be in the school? Rape is a very strong word, and saying he's going to F my son, that's very strong, because if my son were to say that to a female, do you think he would be in school still? I personally don't think so. So it's a problem. What safety does my son have? Is it because he's straight, and one class is protected and one's not? Because these children are transgender and identify as being gay? Or is it, I mean, I hate to say it, and I've said it before, I know I said it to you, and you said, "Oh," is it because I come up here and speak? But what is it? Why isn't my son being protected? What brings this vice to have? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim, followed by, I think it was Mark.
Hi. My name's Kim Gates. I taught 31 years here in Caledonia schools. Darryl and I were teaching colleagues in the middle school at one time as well. I am so proud of the teaching staff that I taught with. I know many are still here. Darryl is still here, although he's moved up in the ranks a little bit. I know the hard work that the teachers have put in and the efforts that they have gone because of COVID. Their teaching jobs have been so much more intensive. It's been a lot more work and effort to maintain classroom and communications with the parents and students and each other. And I just, I am just really proud of our work that we've done over the years here in Caledonia. And finally, I just want to say thank you to you all. I don't know why you do this, why you're here as board members. It's not a fantastically paying job, and I hope that there's some intrinsic reward for you, but I'm so glad. Marcy, I think you've been up here for over 10 years, right? I don't know how someone does that. It's a real selfless, and I just appreciate that you all have put this time and effort into it, especially in the last couple of years with the strain that we've had because of COVID. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Is it Mark, is that correct? Yep, you're up.
Oh, it's hard to tell because there's more than one Mark, you really know. How you doing? Yeah, my name's Mark Petzold. I have a couple of grandchildren, it seemed to be three grandchildren, in this district. So I have a vested interest amongst other things, but I've approached the board before here, and I thought you mentioned a few things, you know, I hear the different comments. I just kind of want to point out, actually, my subject is budget shortfall, so I'm going to back into that a little bit, but just some, what I call weasel words. And so I've heard this thing about critical race theory being a college-level issue, you know, and there's a lot of splitting hairs about that. At the end of the day, is it a good curriculum being taught, or is it a bad curriculum being taught? Is it evil? Is it good? And the thing is, is we can split hairs about these things. Usually, the people I espouse, what I just described, will describe themselves as progressive and passionate and so on and so forth, and while I'm watching their behavior and I'm seeing just the opposite, but the weird thing is, is they might look at me and say the same thing. So what do you do? You judge by the fruit. And the fruit is our culture is going the wrong way. We're turning out kids that are not prepared to actually provide a civil society. We are not turning out kids that will get elected and provide good governance. So the net result is runaway inflation, gas prices, $5 a gallon and the rest of it. I mean, we know these things, right? But what we don't have is good governance. I hear different things too, like doing a poll, so I had to see what the majority wants. You know what's sad is you hear people in government, I mean, I heard Elizabeth Warren the other day say, talking about this being a democracy and the majority, the majority, the majority. Folks, this is civics 101, and I suggest we be teaching that rather than critical race theory or whatever you want to call it. "We're a country outbiding for the people. We're designed to focus on the rights of man, given by God." That means y'all have a job to do, and it isn't to honor the wishes of a mob that may be deranged. Your job is to judge by the fruit and make good decisions and protect the innocent from being hurt. And so sometimes that means going against the majority, but it is the job that you need to do. So there's a thing called doctrine of lesser magistrates. There's times where you all need to actually push back against the governing authorities pushing down on you to protect the innocent. I know this isn't popular. I know people don't want to hear this, and you know, y'all are elected, y'all are sitting there, so thank you for serving, but it is a difficult thing to do. And ultimately, ultimately, at the end of the day, this budget shortfall may not be there if one and a half million dollars didn't go away because the students are leaving versus coming here because they're turning out students that are prepared to provide a civil society. So thank you.
Thank you. This time, we're going to move on to our action items. We have 9A, the director.
Yes, tonight, we'd like to formally bring Scott Houtkavene to the board for hire. Scott has been selected as our next director of technology. Scott comes from Kentwood Public Schools. He's been the director there for 15 years. Extensive experience working with school bonds and other leadership roles within the district. Before that, he worked in the Kentwood Technology Department. And Scott is actually trained as a teacher and took on technology after that, so. Dan Hubbell, our current director, retiring into the calendar year, and the administrators and other staff members, Matt Scott, and he is our top person to fill that vacant seat created by Mr. Hubbell, and we've the board formally hired him tonight, and we would like to welcome Scott.
I move that the board formally approve the hire of Scott Houtkavene as the director of technology effective August 3, 2022.
Second?
I'll second.
Several calls.
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, welcome. We're expecting great things. Technology is just, you know, it's always right there in front of us, so we are looking forward to having you onboard and welcome.
Thank you.
Scott, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say. If so, you can do that at this time.
I would just like to thank you, Dr. Martin, and the members of the administrative team that I met with during the interview process. It was clear that all of those individuals are passionate about being a part of this district, and I can't wait to join the team and continue to do great things here in Caledonia. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, I'm welcome. 9B, we have Emmons Lake Elementary Principal.
Yes, this year, we're going to have two vacancies at our principal ranks at the elementary level. Chris Federani and Jen Schultz have moved on to other positions, creating the vacancies, and we're very excited to bring Dana Champion to the board for formal hire. Dana is currently one of our teachers in the district. She works with our special needs students, and she's also had different leadership experiences and coordinated our summer school last year for our students. And we are very excited, as Dana has a lot to bring to us, and we would like to formally have her be our principal at Emmons Lake. Dana, would you mind standing?
Sure.
I move that the board formally approve the hire of Dana Champion as the principal of Emmons Lake Elementary effective July 1, 2022.
Second?
I'll second.
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. Welcome, congratulations, not welcome, but congratulations. I'm moving. We look forward to having you there.
Thank you.
Would you like to? Sure.
Just thank you to the board and Dr. Martin and the other administrators for the opportunity. I'm excited that I've been in Caledonia since 2017, and to move into this leadership at role at Emmons is exciting, a little nerving, but I'm looking forward to the new opportunity. Thanks.
Glad to have you. Thank you. Congratulations. 9C, Paris Ridge Elementary Principal.
And last but not least, I'd like to ask Lance Jones to stand up for us. Lance is currently an elementary principal at Lakeview Public Schools. We're excited to have Lance join our administrative team. He brings various experiences, and he was the top choice of our team, so.
I move that the board formally approve the hire of Lance Jones as a principal of Paris Ridge Elementary effective July 1, 2022.
I'll second.
By time? Several calls?
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome. We're excited to have you. If you'd like to say anything, you're more than welcome.
Sure. Really appreciate it. I am so looking forward to being part of this district. I grew up in the area and really always admired Caledonia, so I am fortunate. Chris, over at Paris Ridge has been very helpful, having a little bit of time to transition in, as typically this happens late in the summer, and so I'm just really looking forward to working with that one, but I really appreciate the opportunity.
Welcome, thank you. All right, we're going to move to 9D, which is NEOLAs second reading and adoption. These have been policies that have gone through committee. We've had our first reading with them. They've had time for review, questions all along the way, so.
I move that the board conduct a second reading and adopt immediately NEOLA policies 1616, 5463, 5511, 5610, 6110, 6114, 6325, and 7510.
One second. Quiet, second. Please note for anybody that wasn't at the meeting last month, policies, typically policies come to us through recommendation of NEOLA, and they're usually written or revised to keep us in compliance as a district, which give us guidelines. So most of these are just wording changes, revisions along the way. Occasionally, we do have some that are new or that we do have to go outside from NEOLA to ask for recommendations on, so, but that is typically how they come to us, so. Several calls on this.
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. On to 9E, which is a KASD budget for '22, '23.
I move that the board approve the 2023 Kentwood Public Schools district proposed budget as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Were there any further questions on that? This is a typical thing we do every year to get their budget reviewed and make a motion to pass or question, so.
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. On to 9F, which is property sale resolution.
I move that the board approve the resolution for the sale of the Egan Parcel Store in the capital of Calhoun, Ohio, state, with a amount of $325,000.
One second.
I'll second.
Any additional questions on this? All right, we have a roll call, please.
Asper, yes? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia?
Yes.
Isid?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. Say thank you to all of you for coming. Please enjoy the nice evening and travel safe. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?